All right. Good morning. Good morning. Hello there. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, or soon will be. I'm Councilmember Ruth Galanter, President Pro Tem of the Council. Mr. Ferraro was expected, but we don't know exactly what time. We'll start by calling the roll. Madam Clerk.
Bernsen, Chick, Fewer, Galanter, Gobek, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Fornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro. Ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. For those of you who haven't already figured it out, we are being televised by Channel 35. We are also available by council phone. There are 15 of us who are supposed to be here, but there are 10 of us currently present. I refrain from further editorial comment. And we will begin the agenda. Item one. All right, let's do approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Any objections? Seeing none, Mr. Hernandez moves. Mr. Bernson seconds. Mr. Hernandez wasn't here. And Mr. Pacheco moves. Mr. Bernson seconds. Unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Unanimous vote.
Before beginning the regular agenda, item number one. Councilmember Chick requests that be continued to January 18th.
One week. Any objections to continuing it? Item one is continued until the 18th. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items two through eight.
All right. Do we have... We do not have any cards on any of those, and we've held the hearings. Any members of the council, do we have any specials? Item two through eight. Eight. Mr. Padilla calls item eight special. I'm sorry. It's... You were... That's it. Okay. All right. Item eight will be held, and we'll take... Anybody on the council have any comments on items one through seven? Hearing none. Mr. Fewer moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. And we'll have a unanimous vote, unless somebody's going to object. You want to call the roll? Yeah, you might as well call the roll. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. This is items one through seven.
Fourth with on two.
Please. Okay. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items nine through 32.
All right. We'll take them in order.
You have cards on the bunch.
I have cards, yeah, but not on the first couple of them. All right. Item nine. Anybody on the council have any comments? Does anybody in the chamber... If there's anybody in the chamber who wants to speak on any of these items, we need you to fill out a card and do it relatively soon, because we're about to take action on them. Okay. Item nine... The first one I have cards on is 14. So items nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay. Let's see what else we have. How far did we get on those? We were going through... No, but you... Those were all... Through item 32, right? Okay. Let's do item 14. Mr. Robert Avino, if I'm reading this correctly. Mr. Avino, are you here? Did you want to be heard? All right. Hearing none. The public hearing on... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's item 20. Excuse me. Item 14, Mr. Shapiro. I don't like this system.
Madam President and City Council Members, I rise to speak on item number 14, which consists of an extremely old problem that the City Council and the city itself has been having between the powers of the Inspector General of the Police Department and the Executive Director of the Police Commission. As you remember previously, the IG had a report to the Executive Director, and then the Executive Director turned them down... Turned her down on certain items. It ended up in a big fuss. And now the idea is out that the IG, per new charter, reports directly to the Police Commission. Now, this gives the IG more power and the ability to do what's necessary. And there's plenty that needs doing around the Police Commission and the Police Department. For one example, as I mentioned to you last week, there's 460,000 unserved misdemeanor warrants, which still exist and have been collecting for 20 years, rotting away in the files, and nobody lifts a finger to see that something's going to happen with that. The IG can find this out if he's instructed, if the City Council decides that it's important enough to find out why these warrants that have been issued by courts in the County of Los Angeles, why they sit in a cubbyhole and nobody bothers to serve them. And some of them are for pretty serious offenses. It destroys the public's confidence and the ability of the Police Department to make sure that things are done. Anyhow, I'm glad that the City Council is putting the Inspector General on a regular, direct level with the salary commensurate with that of the Executive Director, because I think the IG Inspector General is the only hope that the city can have a police department that's going to do what it's supposed to do. Mr. President.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing on item 14. Is anybody...
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, so we can't adopt it until we have 12 people present. We still have only 10. So we'll hold it on the desk, in hopes that we're going to have 12. Okay. That's on the desk. Now, items nine through 17 are all ordinances plus 27. So all of those... We've adopted the committee reports for nine through 13, and we'll hold the ordinances until we have enough people to do that. Now, 15 is... The rest of these are also ordinances.
Right. And then the next item is the...
All right. Well, let's hold the ordinances, which are 15, 16, and 17, on the desk, and move to the next item, which is item 18. Madam Clerk, you want to do item 18?
Item number 18 is a... It's a communication from the Chair Personnel Committee regarding four appointments for police psychologists. And there's a card on the item.
Yes, there certainly is. All right. We'll have opened the public hearing. Mr. Shapiro.
Madam President and Council Members, item number 18 concerns the hiring of four psychologists. It's claimed in the backup material that there are 11 psychologists who have been used and are presently on the rolls of the Police Department, but it doesn't explain too much what's expected to be done of these psychologists. Are these psychologists... Are they supposed to give training to the police officers so that the police officers don't get involved in incidents with mentally handicapped people or with the people which a psychologist is needed? Or are they trained to give... Are they supposed to give aid to the police officers who have psychological problems? It's not explained explicitly in the backup material, and it's not explained on what's happening. It just says you have four, and there's seven more waiting that you already have previously exempted from civil service provisions, and that these positions were rendered to... Because they're professional scientific and technical nature. And the four nominees are on emergency appointment. You want to make them permanent right now. And then you want to point the 11. I think there's a good use for psychologists in the Police Department for both reasons that I mentioned. Both to train the police officers and to be with the police officers when they run into emergency events where an old 102-pound lady on the street lifts up a screwdriver and gets killed. A psychologist was along, it might produce a different effect. And in this matter, the Sheriff's Department of the County of Los Angeles has determined that psychologists have a use in this effect, and they have them on a standby basis. I see no reason why this can't be done. I think there's two uses for psychologists, and they both should be put into action as quickly as possible.
Well, we have to wait until you're finished before we can adopt it. So, thank you. That closes the public hearing on item... I've lost track already. Item 18. Members of the council, any comments? In that case, Mr. Ridley-Thomas moves. Mr. Wax seconds. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
And fourth with on that, please. So that is approved, and fourth with. Item 19. 20. What happened to 19?
We did 19 with that bunch of...
Oh, okay. Item 20 now. Where's our... Where's Roger? You want 20 to go forward, or you want to continue it? Do something here.
What the...
Hold on. Now we have to get the mic on. Okay, go ahead.
Roger Oldencamp with the Bureau of Engineering. The city engineer is not available today. However, he will be available tomorrow. If there are any questions that would be addressed to him for his response, we'd like to continue it one day until tomorrow.
All right. Actually, I have some questions. We do have somebody here who wanted to speak on this item. And so, members of the council, what I'm going to do is give the gentleman... Open the public hearing, give the gentleman an opportunity to be heard today if he wants, and then ask that we'll continue the item until tomorrow so that the city engineer can be available as well.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we will open the public hearing on item 20. And Mr. Avino, are you here? And I'm sorry if I'm not reading your name correctly.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, council members, I am not opposed to continuing this until tomorrow.
All right, fine. Then we'll hear from you tomorrow. We'll hold the item on the desk and hold the public hearing open. And that's item 20. And move on to the next item.
Item number 22 is the next item, Madam President.
Okay. Item 22 is... What do we have here in item 22? These pieces of paper flip over too fast. We have a card on item 22. Mr. Shapiro.
Madam President, item 22 is an item that is dear to your heart, because it has to do with recycling, and specifically, the new name that you coined for it, grass cycling. As far as I can determine, from the backup papers that you have on this, there's two purposes that you hope to use to make sure that the people understand what's happening here. You want to sell as many zero-emission electric lawn mowers as you can, and you want to retire as many old gasoline-powered mowers as you can. And over the past few years, you have sold 805 zero-emission electric lawn mowers and retired 457 for a net gain of 348 electric lawn mowers, and beginning with the diversion of 165 tons of grass. I think this is noteworthy. I think this is a good point, that the people should understand that when you mow your lawn, you don't throw the grass leavovers into the garbage, but you do what you can to recycle them. And there's a lot of other ways that we can recycle them, because we are state-mandated to cut down our use of garbage landfills 50 percent. Maybe if we cut them down a little bit more, we could... Wouldn't have troubles like we do about these dumps that we have located in San Fernando Valley and Granada Hills. I think that one of the prime objectives that should be right along with this is the fact that people who live in apartments and who live in condos, like myself, want to recycle, and there's no ways that they can recycle any of the cans, any of the paper, any of the bottles, anything that's easily recyclable if the city only makes sure that they give them a chance to do this. The city started something a couple of weeks ago after a long delay of five years.
Mr. Shapiro, this is about grass cycling. This is not specifically about the rest of it.
Your principles are the same. You're grass cycling to make sure that you meet, as you say in here, the objectives of the state law. I'm telling you, other ways you can meet the objectives too. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. That closes the public hearing on item 22. Any members of the council wish to be heard? I have to do something here to do that. No. All right. There we go. All right. In that case, Mr. Hernandez, you want to move this one? You'll move this one. Mr. Fewer, seconds. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Aha. We have 12 people. Let's go back and do the ordinances. Did we get them all? We have one...
We have nine...
Up for 27. Let's do nine. Go ahead.
Do you want to...
Madam President.
Let's do the ones we've got.
Fourth with on 22, please.
Fourth with on 22.
We have nine through 17. Our ordinance is first consideration.
All right. Anybody wish to be...
Madam Chair, is 15 separate? Is that the charter change? Or modifying with the code?
What did we do with 15?
Yeah, item 15.
We adopted the report, and then, since it's an ordinance, we had to hold it on the desk for 12 members. for 12 members.
I was just wondering if we could get a staff report as, because it's dealing with the charter change, what this actually does.
Okay, first, let's adopt the other ordinances and then we'll do that. So items nine through 17, with the exception of 15. All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, item 15, do we have staff here on item 15?
Staff's on their way if you want to hold this.
All right, we'll hold that and go on to something else.
Item number 29 is the next item. You have a card?
Item 29, Mr. Shapiro.
Madam President, I sure wish you could get some of your colleagues on the council to talk because I don't like to be the only one who's saying something about each of these individual items, which a lot of them deserve a lot of comment besides my own.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but it's very unusual, as you know, for this group to not have something to say, and I'm sure they will revert to type any minute now.
Good. Item 29 concerns what you're going to do with the 1 percent that you have appropriated for art, art structures, and in this connection, what are you going to do about the art money that's been collected in the parking structure in Studio City? There's approximately $40,000 involved and it says here in the motion that you didn't know about this quickly enough so that therefore you're saying you can't do anything about making the parking structure artistic, so you have to take the money and you're asking for permission to put it in a, in another fund for which the art fund will, can no longer be accomplished. Well, I think people should be more aware of the art factor in all construction. That's the purpose of the 1 percent law. You want things to be artistic. But while you're about it and you're talking about parking structures, you have to understand there are use for parking structures too. And if you build this parking structure, why is it that you can only put it out in the hands of people who charge high rates for people to park? Everybody knows that the reason malls succeeded all over the city is because there were free parking. They know that Santa Monica, Pasadena, Burbank, and Glendale have free parking all over. But when it comes to the city of LA, there's no free parking. Now, I know they give contributions, the parking companies give big contributions to all the city council people, but you ought to overlook that because it's important to the operation of the entire city that we have free parking all over, at least equal to the free parking that exists in our neighboring cities and at least equal to the parking that exists in all malls that have been successful over the past. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. That closes the public hearing and we have item 29 before us. Does anybody on the council wish to be heard on item 29? Mr. Fewer moves, Mrs. Walters sec, I'm sorry. Well, we haven't voted on it yet, hold on. I'm trying to vote on it right now. I just had you move it and Mrs. Walters second it. And now we're going to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote...
13 ayes.
And send it forthwith. We just have to get these in the right order here. All right, next item.
Madam President, item number eight is still on the desk. There was an amending motion.
Okay, we'll go back then to item number eight. And Mr. Padilla, you called this special. Do me a favor and press the button on your thing, though. Okay.
Do you want me to press it?
No, I have yours.
Thank you, Madam President. As we all know, there's been discussions going on for, for years now within and around the city of Los Angeles on improving transportation system, discussions at the MTA board in various communities throughout the city of Los Angeles. What we have today is the next step in the process of creating a valley transit zone, which is intent and purpose would be to improve and expand the bus service in and around the San Fernando Valley. The city's been discussing the process along with other cities that we hope to partner with throughout the San Fernando Valley, including Burbank, Glendale, San Fernando, Calabasas, and others. We've gotten a lot of headway in closing some of the technicalities and some of the legalities of creating the transit zone. And I would ask for the support of all the council to take this next step, to sign on to an interim joint powers authority to move forward with the final studies and analysis, to move forward with the final application to the MTA to create a transit zone in the San Fernando Valley. And let me also mention and acknowledge, one of the major concerns in the process of establishing the transit zone is how we can achieve some cost savings. There's some concerns that the people working at the MTA who drive buses, who maintain buses, would be the people who bear the brunt of cost savings. And let me say today that I don't believe a valley transit zone would work without maintaining the quality of life that those workers currently have. It would not make any sense to improve bus service in the San Fernando Valley and sink the economy by creating low-wage jobs. So with that being said, I'd ask for the council's full support on item eight.
Thank you. Mrs. Chik.
Yes, I'm pleased that my colleague from across the San Fernando Valley has explained this so well to you colleagues, and I rise to also urge unanimous support. Last week, we talked about the problems and the need for solutions on the 101 freeway corridor. We talked about needing to make sure that our dollars through the MTA are properly encumbered so we don't lose them at the state level. And this is another piece in terms of needing to take steps forward to look at all possible ways of improving public transportation. My colleague mentioned two very key issues that need to be addressed and dealt with before moving forward in looking at creating a separate San Fernando Valley bus zone as being one of those improvements. And that is both not denigrating in any way, but rather hopefully improving bus transit service in other parts of the city and the region, and also making sure that the improvements in transit are not done on the backs of the workers involved in delivering that improved service. So I, along with my colleague and actually the full council, look forward to this group, this interim joint powers authority to come back to us with recommendations and then the hard work begins. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of council, this is where I get to give my only and the Republic of Los Angeles would separate be equal speech. And it's because that's the direction I think that we're headed, and I'm not sure that that's the direction we as a council want to head in. One, let me state in advance that I'm also supporting the funding of this study. I think it's important that we do that. But if we find that the system could be improved and could provide better service, then why aren't we talking about it citywide? And, and, and that has to be a question that has to be asked because, see, what, what I know happens in, in my district is that early in the morning, my constituents get on the bus and they head out to the valley to work. And what I know happens in the afternoon, they get on the bus and they head back home. And, and it's because they're the bus riders and that's where their jobs are. That's not where their homes are. I also know there are constituents that travel in the valley to the valley. But, see, what we're doing here is we're one city who's basically now proposing to look at establishing two different bus systems. And that is where I'm asking some civil rights questions. Why is it that we feel that you can have an improved system over there and not an improved system over here? So I think the study is important to answer those kinds of questions and should be looking at those kinds of questions. One, I think it's paramount that we look at the question of servicing the bus riders, wherever they're coming from and wherever they're going. And having two systems has to be looked at, how that is impacted. And two, if it can be done, if you can improve the quality for lowering the cost, then why can't we do that citywide? And I think that would be a tool MTA would welcome and so forth. So I just wanted to caution us as the direction we're going because I do know that the Supreme Court has already issued a ruling on separate not being equal. And if we claim to treat our constituents the same throughout this city, we have to look at those kinds of questions. And how is it that service can provide equally with two different systems is part of what we're beginning to look at, and I think that the study has to analyze that. Again, if we can improve the quality of service and lower the cost, I'm for that 100 percent. But I want to make sure that we're not creating two separate systems that does not improve that quality of service. And that's why I'm supporting the study at this time.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I was one of the original seconders of the motion that was brought in by Mr. Alakon on this, and I also sponsored it at the MTA level. There are some pitfalls and I want to point them out to you. I'm supportive of, and I'm going to vote to support this, but I must tell you, there are a number of things that concern me about this alignment. Number one is the amount of money that's being offered by MTA, which is $60 an hour, whereas MTA operates at $108 an hour. I think Foothill operates at $80 an hour. And we're talking about giving the valley, this new consortium, $60 an hour to take over the service. Well, something's wrong here and the potential cost to the city of Los Angeles is $70 million a year. That's the potential cost or the potential difference. Also, another problem is what portion of the, of the responsibility of operation is going to be based upon the San Fernando Valley? If it's limited to 45 percent, which is basically what our portion of it is, and I'm not sure, I'd like to ask somebody from transportation, if we have somebody here, whether that is based upon population, area, or a number of bus lines. And maybe you can answer that question when I'm finished. A third thing, a third problem here is our representation. On a nine-member board, we're going to have four representatives. Now, you know what that means. It means we're going to be in the same position we are on MTA, not having the muscle or the majority to carry out what are the concerns of the San Fernando Valley. I'm not interested in getting into a situation that's separate just so we're separate. It has to be a situation that we have a voice in, where we have the ability to destine our, to, to take care of our, our future destinations and our future ability to service the San Fernando Valley. So these are things that need to be ironed out. We need to be in a position where we have, and also, if we don't have alternates on the, on the four members that represent the San Fernando Valley, we're going to be in a position, unless all our four members are there, that we're going to have less than even four, you know, a, a 40 percent representation there. So these are things that need to be resolved before the final thing takes place. And I, and the study is good. I think we need to move forward, but we need to do a better job of negotiating with MTA before this is finalized. We do need to do a better job with our neighbors who are going to be part of the consortium. Because just to say that we have a separate valley section is not going to solve the problem. We need to think, in all due respect, and I'm concerned about the people, the bus drivers and all those people, the number one thought we need to have is about the people who are going to be served by it. They come first. And also, how we deal with the economics of it so that we can operate economically. I, I know it's subsidized, all public transportation is subsidized, but it needs to be at the highest level of efficiency so we have the lowest amount of subsidy on this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Fewer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam President, pardon me.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, Jerry Miller with the CLA's office, very briefly. Just to be clear, that the action today is only to approve an interim JPA to conduct the study. They won't have any responsibility for running the zone. In terms of the number of votes, it was an extended process and very heated negotiations. The city proposed, based on population, based on mileage, et cetera, to have a majority vote on the board. The other agencies flat out indicated that if the city had a majority of the votes...
Jerry, the question I asked was how was the, was it, was it based upon population? How was it based? That's what we really needed to know.
It was not based upon population.
What was it based upon?
It, it was based upon the most votes the city could get on the board. As I was saying, they, they rejected the basis for a majority vote. They said, "We will not go forward." We were, ended up negotiating for four out of the nine votes with veto authority over all of the major decisions on the board.
So we're going to have, we're going to have area that represents a minority of the population that's going to be served, a minority of the bus lines, and they're going to be able to dictate, believe me, I'm going to go with this today, but if, unless we can make a change in that, I will not support something that puts us back in a minority position again.
Okay, but now your time's up. That wasn't answering the question. Mr. Fewer.
That's okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Burnson actually has said a number of things with which I strongly agree. And in fact, my original reason for speaking, because I am going to be supportive of this motion today, was to add some of those very thoughts. And the ones that I think are most significant are these. First, that our goal needs to be to zero in on what's best from a transit rider's perspective, and that should be our exclusive focus as we evaluate this. Second, that it has to be financially feasible, obviously. The reports indicate that the key question is, can we transfer savings from administrative overhead at the MTA into a valley transit zone that would allow the work to be performed less expensively than now, which means more service? I mean, the idea from this is not to save the MTA money. The idea is to use the same dollars and get more expanded service for riders who need it the most, people who are transit dependent. The governance issue is a crucial issue, and I, I wanted to, I think, expand on this point, if only because I want it clear as we go back, and Jerry, you know, there's a negotiating this, that the sentiment of the council be explicitly stated. Hal has both the opportunity and the burden of serving on the MTA right now, and it is both, but saddled with a bureaucracy that has frequently been completely out of control and the inability to direct our future. If the premise of the transit zones are, is two, if the premises are two. One, the most important one, get more service for riders. And two, get more control over decisions. If we don't get more control, half the reason is thrown into question at most. So I think that those points were extremely well taken. The administrative savings are obviously a crucial point, but we need to be reexamining again whether we are in fact sacrificing control or freezing a status quo that has been inadequate for the city when it's, when it comes to determining what our own future should be.
Okay, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I mean, Madam President. It appears that we're rolling back the clock to the early 60s when you had a MTA then, you had zones all over the city of Los Angeles. And what you end up doing was inconveniencing the riders. Since then, we've been thinking of the riders, the cost, transportation should be made affordable. But at that time, every time you got a transfer, you went from one zone to another and even one company to another, it costs you five times what it costs you today and order thereof to get from South Central or East LA or the valley to get downtown. And the moment you start these zones again, that's exactly what's going to happen. They say if it's not broke, don't try to fix it. Leave it alone. It works finally once and for all. And of course, I don't think you'll ever get UTU or ATU to go along with this. In fact, I think the legislature, even the author of the bill was Richard Alakon, that says that you must pay prevailing wages or union wages in order to establish a zone in the valley anywhere else. If that's the case, then you ought to just forget about this because the cost is going to be essentially the same. You'll add to it overhead which you now have in place that serves both the MTA and the valley as well. Once you separate it, it's going to cost you more. So I'm not, I'm just going to vote against this study to make my point made. I mean, I've done this over and over again. I just think it's rather, not in the best interest of taxpayers to spend this kind of money for a study that we, that a lot of people know they're going to vote against and they have the reason for voting against it. Just makes no sense. I told Richard that when he was here. He went to Sacramento, he, he learned what he had done was an error, and he tried to fix it by saying you'll pay prevailing wages, voting for the legislation to say you pay prevailing wages, which means that it's not going to happen because they'll pay exactly what MTA's paying its bus drivers and its mechanics and et cetera. So I just think that it's going to go down the tubes eventually. It's not going to be cost-effective and that's where you're going to vote, so I'm voting no right now.
Okay, Ms. Zekowski.
I am very strongly in support of this, and I think the discussion has been healthy. As a lot of our, my colleagues have indicated, there are issues at stake. I think what this is, is the perennial issue of what is better, super-regionalization, in which we try to provide equality of service throughout, or decentralization, which gives more local control, local attention. Clearly, in the past, when we had those local zones, we had problems. I think 20 years later, we are able to be more enlightened about how we will service that and how we will deal with that through more coordination between all of the zones. But I think that this is an idea whose time has come. It makes sense. This is an exploratory interim JPA that still has questions to answer, legitimate questions as some of you have pointed out, but I think it is a step forward. And I think that we have learned, are more enlightened from the days of old when there was, when there were separate zones... were separate zones that didn't coordinate, didn't work together in terms of traveling through those long distances and through those zones. And I think we will be able to do it better. But I think that the analysis that is requested and to be forthcoming as a part of this study makes sense, and I think this may provide us the best of both worlds in terms of that super-regionalization issue versus decentralization. And I think it's a model whose time has come, and it's worth moving forward, and so I am very strongly in support of today's action.
Ms. Goldberg.
Well, I have some misgivings for just, actually, what you just said. The reason is, is that we had such terrible problems when we had all of these smaller regional areas. It was so expensive, and nothing connected well for people who are traveling between areas. I mean, one of the things that happens is, is everybody likes to think that everybody who lives south of the mountains travels just south of the mountains, and everybody north of the mountains just travels north of the mountains. It's not true. A great many employees in this city who are transit-dependent live on one side of the mountains and work on the other. And one of the things I worry about is that we go back, some of you are young and do not remember, but when we had it before, all broken up, you sometimes had to pay more than one fare, the schedules didn't coordinate, so I'm concerned about those issues. Having said that, I'll still vote for the study, because I think more information can't do anything but be useful. But I will tell you that sometimes when you repeat history, you also repeat the mistakes that came with that history. And those mistakes were that we had a very ill-coordinated, disconnected, fragmented, and most importantly, more expensive for the traveler system before, where they had zone changes and, I mean, everything. I'm telling you, this was, it is cheaper now to travel because it's one system and you don't have all this business. And so I just want to say, I hope that those of you who have the ability to appoint folks, and I really wish that an item five, a three, rather, there was at least one or two appointees from people who are transit-dependent and south of the mountains that go north and vice-versa, because this is not a city in which everybody stays on one side of the mountains. And you can take a look at the bus routes that go between to see how many people are actually on them. And I'd really hate to go back to the bad old days, where it costs more, there were all kinds of messes with the scheduling and coordination, and that's one of the reasons we have a large system now. So maybe we can have a study that looks at how you give more local control over setting where the routes are on one side, each side of the mountains, but still leaves it as a system, so that we don't end up with people paying multi-fares and ending up with a more costly-to-ride system if you happen to live on one side or the other of the mountains. So I'll vote for it, but I want to remind people that we've been here and we've done that, and before we go there and do that again, I hope we've learned from those issues, because my transit-dependent district is right up against those mountains, and a lot of the people I represent do travel into the Valley every day to go to work.
Mr. Wax.
Well, I think we're all killing ourselves today by what we're pretending that we're approving. The reality is, I think if anyone listened to the dialogue that's gone on here today, will recognize that it's unlikely we're going to achieve the savings that could be achieved, and we could end up with the worst of both worlds. Because I don't believe that this council is going to have the political fortitude to do what it takes to make the system run more efficiently, provide more rides at less cost. I don't think the council will have the guts to do that. On the other hand, to look good and that it's doing something, it might create exactly what Mr. Holden and Ms. Goldberg are saying, a more complicated, more costly system to administer without having done what it's going to take to achieve the savings that made some of us propose this in the first place. And I think that several of you have given signals already that you're not going to, when this comes back, you're not going to do what's going to take to lower the cost. What I'm fearful of is if we're not willing to really do what's going to need to be done, we could make it worse. We could not achieve the savings because we don't have the fortitude to do it, and we could make the system more complicated, more difficult, and more costly in the end. This could work. Studies are very clear. Studies are very clear that we can provide more rides, more routes, quicker service at less cost, but there will be a price to pay, and I don't think this council is willing to pay that price. And if we're not, then I'm really worried that we're going to be playing games, and the games could end up costing us more. All right, that's not going to be resolved today. That's going to be resolved in a year from now. But I think that if you listen very carefully to what people said today, you can almost anticipate exactly where the showdown will be a year from now, and it will be very interesting to see what happens when that occurs. I think that in doing this, we should also take a look at what Mr. Hernandez says. If for some magical reason, that somehow we could bring ourselves to the point where we really could come up with something that provides for more efficient, better service, we should look at replicating that all over. I suspect, however, Mike, that the reason that's not going to happen is because the very things that probably keep us from doing it in the Valley are even more certain to keep it from being done outside the Valley. But maybe, I don't know, I mean, you have a point that, and it's a point that's being made with the school district right now, maybe, in fact, better service is provided by dividing into a smaller district all over, at least from the operating standpoint. And that's something that should be explored along with that. And I, you know, if more people can benefit, all the better. The benefits aren't exclusive to one area, but I think this started in one area out of a sense of frustration and out of the same sense that you see with the school district and you see with the city as a whole. But I don't realistically think it's going to happen. I think Mr. Holden is right on that, that people will get some learning, and they won't vote for it, and we might make it worse. But on the other hand, maybe if through this process we can prove we could make it better, the public pressure might finally get great enough to bring it about. We'll see. It's going to be interesting.
Mrs. Chig.
Yes, colleagues, one, I'm surprised at some of the cynicism around the table, although certainly, I share the view that what we have now, citywide, not just in the Valley, what we have now in terms of mass transit from the MTA is absolutely not satisfactory. But for us to be sitting here and predicting what's going to happen next, the whole point of doing this is to professionally and carefully take a look at, is creating a separate bus zone for the San Fernando Valley and its geographic neighbors make sense? Is it a win-win? And certainly, those of us who are going into this are aware of the history and the problems, know what happened before when there were multiple zones and it was costly, and are going in with that history in mind, and certainly not looking to make the same mistakes. Also, I would add that at the very least, this is a way to put pressure on the MTA to improve itself, because we don't have the confidence, we shouldn't have the confidence, that the MTA left all on its own in the way it's been doing things is going to take care of this city's, much less this Valley's, transit needs. So we have to do something, and this is a good proactive step that either will end up resulting in recommendations that make sense for a separate zone, or other recommendations, and recommendations that can be followed for other parts of the city. This is about improving public transportation throughout the whole city. The Valley seems to be taking the first step in this way. So I look forward to having the study go forward, and more importantly, to having the results, and to having them be substantive, productive recommendations. Thank you.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Previous question, ma'am.
We have three more people who've asked to speak.
I withdraw.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, I believe, is next.
And I only raised two. One, we're sure we understand what we're doing, but I had a question that came up in committee. In committee, I'd asked that we basically get an opinion from the city attorney. First of all, I wanted to show that all we're doing today is voting on an interim board that basically is going to commission an interim study, a study as to the feasibility of this and how it will function. And the partners of the board, by percentages, are going to be funding the studies. So we're funding approximately 45 percent of the study, and that's why I'm supporting it. I think the questions of governance are good questions. I deal with it with a capacity and a blue-line authority all the time, and believe me, many times on crucial votes, it's clearly three to two, and we are outvoted, and they have that authority, and because we were not involved in that process, we ended up on the short end of the stick, and I think that now, we learned from that process, and we made sure we had veto power over certain other areas. But the question I was asking in terms of legality, and I asked it in committee, and we asked the city attorney to provide us a report, was the city exposing itself to any liability by heading in this direction in regards to the bus riders' union lawsuit and any lawsuits that MTA is dealing with in terms of its funding of services and lack of funding of services?
Members of the council, Tim McCosker, City Attorney's Office. In fact, the proposed JPA is for a interim period and is not for purposes of conducting the operations of the transit system. And our analysis is that, in fact, we would not be exposing ourselves to liability of partners within the JPA for their own operations, which is not to say we would not get a challenge, but we believe that we would have a complete defense to any of the operational liabilities of our partners, given that this is an interim period, there are joint indemnifications, and these are for planning purposes only and not for the operation of a system.
So there'll be no service provided? That's part of why we would not have that exposure?
Under this proposed agreement, yes.
Uh huh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor this. These studies have been done. The studies have been done for various sections of the city as well as the San Fernando Valley, and they show it can be efficient and it can be improved. The two key issues that need to be resolved here are basically the funding and the basis of control. And those things, if we cannot solve those problems, we may be heading towards impasse. I just want to make you, you know, as much as I support this, we have to be realists. And if we can't get past those two things with our neighbors and with MTA, then we're probably just going through an exercise in futility.
Mr. Wax.
Yes, Ms. Chig. Maybe I should have spelled this out. I was trying to be polite. In the end, this is going to be a union issue and a labor issue, and that is going to determine what this council does, and you will mark my words a year from now, when we have this debate, that what I said will come to pass. And if I'm wrong, I will tell you.
If you don't, somebody else will. Mr. Padilla to close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Think Councilmember Chig alluded to it earlier. We hear and we discuss a lot about relieving the congestion on the 101 freeway, and that's very, very important to the San Fernando Valley in terms of transportation. But the Valley is increasingly diverse. As each year passes, it's diverse in many respects, including transportation. For the benefit of not only transit in the Valley, but the economy of a significant region of our city, I believe we need to improve bus service, and this is all we're doing as we talk about a Valley Transit Zone. Councilmember Goldberg and Holden and Hernandez mentioned some very good arguments, some very valid concerns, in my opinion, about creating a two-tiered system and what that means in terms of civil rights. The bottom line, from my point of view, is it's not happening now. We're not seeing a whole lot of improvement, a whole lot of efficiency being gained now. We need to find a new way. Concerns have been raised about creating regions and what the meshing will be across the regions as people try to traverse various regions through the city. All I can do is have faith in the people who will be involved, to learn from the mistakes of the past, to understand transportation and our economies today, and develop a system that corresponds to those needs. Other concerns that have been raised, the funding gap, how effectively we'll be able to cross various regions of the city, and ultimately, how strong the voice the city of Los Angeles will have on this board. Up until this point, the city of Los Angeles has carried the financial burden, the burden of liability in this process. I'm glad to see we're making progress in that same direction, and I would hope to see that we have that same direction as we move possibly towards a full transit zone. And that would be the only scenario in which I would support it ultimately. Thank you very much, and once again, colleagues, I do ask for your support on this item.
All right, that completes our list of council speakers, and I'm sure Mr. Shapiro is reassured that the council is as talkative as ever. And we will now open the roll on item eight.
On the amending motion.
On the amending motion, we will open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, three noes.
Okay, and now we'll do eight as amended. That was approved, so we'll do eight as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, three noes.
All right, that is approved as well. Do we need a fourth with on that? Probably. Let's do that fourth with. All right, we have three items left. Let's do item 27 next, which is a Prop 5, but is a friendly Prop 5. For those who are curious about this, this is a way of speeding up the process. If whoever's handing out papers would leave Mr. Padilla alone for a minute, we could do item 27. 27 is your Prop 5. On the Conservation Corps. What?
This is actually a very...
Well, hold on a second. I think since it's a Prop 5, we need the city attorney to, do you need to say anything?
No, you just need to make the findings.
All right, so we have to vote first on the findings that the need arose subsequent to the posting of, just a Rule 16?
Just, yes. What I'm saying, not findings, but to assert jurisdiction. You need to first assert jurisdiction.
All right, so let's open the roll on whether or not to assert jurisdiction. Open the roll, 27 we're talking about here. Open the roll. This is to assert jurisdiction. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, the item is now before us. Did you wish to say something? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. This is actually a very minor matter, but unfortunately, an example of somehow when bureaucracies and legalities get in the way. What we're trying to do here in the 7th Council District is build another community garden. We have great partnerships on board, including the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, but in order to use the land and develop a community garden, we're have to go through this process, so I'd hope to count on your support and ask for unanimous vote on this item.
All right, open the roll on item 27. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And that one, I know, has to go forth with. We wouldn't be in this mess in the first place. Okay, that's approved and gone. Now, Mrs. Walters has asked that item 19 be reconsidered and held over until tomorrow, along with item 20, which we've already held over until tomorrow. So if there is no objection to reconsidering item 19 and holding it over, do I hear any objections? Hearing none, it is reconsidered and continued until tomorrow's meeting. Next, item number 15, I believe, is the one we have left on the desk. Mr. Hernandez? Yeah, I know, but let's take them in order. Item 15, Mr. Hernandez had asked for a staff report.
I was just asking if Mr. Deaton could explain to us what we're doing here. I believe strongly any time that we are doing work in regards to the charter, particularly in regards to charter reform, there should be a public presentation as to what we're actually voting on. And I asked Mr. Deaton if he would please explain it. That way, the viewers of Channel 35 also would know the work that the council's doing in that direction.
In this particular instance, what you have before you is really a relatively simple ordinance that make it, some of the provisions administrate relative to franchising consistent with the new charter. There is a, one change that in the charter, the new charter that is not reflected in the ordinance is that the Section 211 of the former charter provided that when the Board of Transportation Commission sent the recommendations before the council, we required three-quarters vote in order to overrule those, modify or repeal it. That provision is not currently, is not in the new charter. However, it is not, what has happened is that the existing code tracks the existing charter, and there isn't an ordinance before you to change that, although that could be done in a future iteration of this.
Uh huh. Okay. And it affects the Commissions of Information Technology as well as...
Any franchise.
Okay.
There are three commissions affected the Transportation, I'm sorry, there are three commissions...
I think you should say for the tape who you are.
I'm sorry, Pete Edgeria from the City Attorney's Office. There are three commissions affected the Transportation Commission, the Taxicab Commission, and Information Technology Commission.
Right. And for example, we just had major debate in regards to cable franchises and the fact that they're going to be... fact that they're going to be coming up for renewal in a couple of years. And this basically, as it stands right now, we're trying to modify the new charter, not modify, but put the new charter, or the old charter concurrent with the new charter, and we still have options to make some changes after that.
No, no, no. What we're doing is we, the new charter supplants the old charter. What we're trying to do is, in the new charter, requires that a whole bunch of things come out of the charter and be done by ordinance.
Okay.
And so this is an ordinance.
Right, this, this ordinance.
Wait, wait a second. This is an ordinance to flesh out what, what is no longer in the charter, but now needs to be done in an ordinance. Because it's an ordinance, it can be changed by a subsequent ordinance whenever somebody brings in a motion and has the vote.
Right. That's what I understood. I just didn't know how to say it that way. Thank you.
Well, I, I hope, yes. Okay, are we ready to vote? Does anybody else have any comments? Item 15 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. And that brings us to item 34. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam President, item number 34.
All right, Ms. Goldberg. Item 34. And could you push the button, please?
President, members of the council, item 34 is a Prop 5 that deals with some contracts that are involved at the City of Los Angeles. There's been a confusion between it because two of the contracts are by the same contractor. And one of them is a difficult problem and the other one is a labor problem, but not necessarily a contractual problem. I'm wondering if we could hold this over, if this isn't the last day till tomorrow, and see if we can resolve the issues prior to that and, and then come back on this tomorrow and see if we can have, maybe without having it be something that the council has to decide, something that perhaps the mayor's office and the unions that are involved have an opportunity to discuss.
All right, so may I interpret that as a request to continue this until tomorrow?
If this isn't the last day.
All right, I don't.
Tomorrow, the 12th is the last day.
Tomorrow is the last day. Then I, this is a request to continue it one day and give us an opportunity to see if we can work something out.
Do I hear any objections to continuing it one day? Hearing none, it is continued until tomorrow's meeting.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item.
This is a time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
All right, Mr. Shapiro.
Madam President, on this item for public comment, I'd like to bring up a matter which I have discussed with several members. That's the fact, that there's been no district meetings of the city council, with one exception, when you had an airport meeting about a month or so ago, and which was very well-attended, despite the fact that in 1998, you had 10 meetings. Yes, I admit that the president, John Ferraro, exerted strong pressure to see that you had these 10 meetings and that the pressure was lacking during 1999, seems to be lacking during the new year of 2000. But there's no reason why city council people don't understand that the people want to see the city council in live action. They want to see you in their own communities. And they proved that during the 12 meetings that they held, where the average attendance was between 400 and 500 people. People want to see their city council. And if they can't see the city council, the only action left for them, outside of occasional sneak preview on TV, the only action left for them is secession. And that's why you're hearing secession movements from, in addition to the San Fernando Valley, you're getting it from the Harbor area, you're getting it from Hollywood, and you're going to be getting it from, from Venice and a few other places. People do not wish to be part of a council or any organization where you can't come down and talk to them, where you don't feel they're your representatives, where you don't have democracy in action, which you should have. And the only alternative is secession. And those, for those of you who think that the City of LA should not break up and forget the facts that history have taught, has taught you, that Hollywood was once an independent city, that San Pedro was once an independent city, but what happened in the past can happen again. If there's reason to get together, they will. If there's reason to break apart, they will. But the point is, one of the easiest ways you got is to hold district meetings. And if I'm the only one pushing, Cindy Misakowski has promised me that she will have one shortly. There will be a meeting in her districts. And I see no reason why Laura Chick, who's running for public office, and Mr. Fuhrer, who's running for public office, can't have a, a council meeting in their own area just to let the public know that their heart's in the right place, that they know that community district meetings are the main way that you can convince the people that the City of LA cares about them and cares about the average person and will show you and allow you to communicate with them. Mr. President.
All the cards we have, so the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Before going into closed session, Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk?
Yes. We're going to go in executive session, so all those people not involved with the executive session, please leave the council chamber. Okay, next item.
Motions for posting and referral.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused the Fridays between January 14th and March 3rd for personal business. January 14th, I need a motion, and the others meet council policy.
All right, Mr. Hernandez moves, unanimous vote.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused Wednesday, February 16th. City Business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote. Mr. Holden?
I'd like to be excused, personal business.
Put it in normally, you know.
I so moved.
Unanimous vote. Next item.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused Wednesday, January 12th, and Friday, January 28th, personal business. I need a motion.
You need a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mrs. Walters moves, unanimous vote.
That clears the desk.
Okay. Okay, Sergeant.
What do we have before us?
Item number 33 is settlement in the case of Carol Adkins versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of 18.7 million to be paid over four years.
Ms. Galanter moved. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Okay, we have some adjourning motions.
Members of the council, I'd ask for adjournment in memory of Reverend William Say, who passed away. He leaves three sons, Dr. Andrew, Peter, and John, three daughters, Ruth, Esther, and his lawyer. Ask for adjourn in his memory. Mr.?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Richard Neil Cronister, passed away New Year's Eve, survived by his wife Marjorie, his son Richard, and Cliff and Carol Magnus, stepson and daughter-in-law, and David Newton, who's also a stepson.
Ms. Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Cora Haskins, who passed away Saturday, January 8th. She had been a resident of Los Angeles for 50 years and of CD9 for probably most of those 50 years. She's survived by one son and three grandchildren. Ms. Haskins had, for all the years that she's been here, she's been active in Democratic Party politics for the city, for this area and in this area. She's worked on local campaigns, worked on national campaigns, and whenever there was a call for help in a campaign for lick and stick, she did it. She walked precincts, she did all of the work that was needed to assist in getting Democratic candidates and primarily African-American candidates elected, and she will be sorely missed.
Call the roll. All right, the council is adjourned.